What we call the decentralized water resource recovery facility. I've referred to as the reclamation plant or the U-Banks Road Wide Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's been called a couple of different names, but essentially it refers to a plant that would be proposed to be privately built and operated privately using at least temporarily approved and a lot of discharge and at some point in time converting over to 100% reclamation or reuse water production as development occurs. I think tonight what we wanted to do is get into the technical aspects of the facility a little bit more. You'll recall we've had back in October of '16, we, Tim spoke, I think, at great length about the project until.
Somewhat truncated.
Yeah, but it seems like you were up there for a little while, but then everything kind of got distracting.
I would know.
So there's that. We talked a little bit about it too at a previous workshop, but obviously it wasn't as fully formed of a concept as what we have right now. And so again, getting back into the technical aspects of it, what it means. Tim's going to get into that and then also to what are the timelines for this? What sort of reviews and approvals would be necessary? And then if we can get to it, you know, and engage what's your, you know, what's your level of understanding, whether you feel like you've had enough time to wrap your heads around it at this point in time after all the discussion. We want to talk a little bit about what we, what we would have to do next. And, you know, my, my preference would be to get as much as possible into the technical aspects of it, like we had talked about, to understand really what the plant's going to do, what the timelines are. And then what do we have to do? Figure out before we leave what we have to do in terms of NPDS permit in the letter of intent, which, which could formalize that. And then we can just kind of, I would just briefly mention that we would, we would also need to probably have an operations agreement with the operator of the plant and then figure out too when we were going to address the force main, Chatham Park Financial Guarantee Agreement. But none of those steps, I think we have to get into details of those particular instruments. In other words, we, I don't, I don't anticipate or envision us tonight going into the details of those documents other than understand that they're there and when we would have to tackle them. And again, Tim's going to kind of get into a little bit of that and what those mean in terms of the decentralized facility and then I think leave for us a subsequent meeting, possibly on the 12th or the second meeting in June to get into the NPDS permit letter of intent issue. So I guess with, with that, if you have, unless anybody else has any other questions, I would turn it over to the star of the show. We had a slideshow that's been updated from the one that you had received and I think there's a couple of slides on there that have been updated, most notably which is the site plan for the decentralized facility. But Tim can highlight some of those.
They are also in the deck that's printed in front of you. So whether you want to crane with the screens or just follow along with the paper in front of you, there's nothing's changed from that point forward. Okay, so. And yeah, Brian is right. I think the last time we talked at length about this was back before Thanksgiving, either October, November. And so we, while it's not 100%, we do have probably two-thirds recycled content in our presentation here, so we're stewards of the resources. So, and, and some of these things, you know, we probably talked about more last time that maybe it's just a refresher and other things a little bit newer that we'll talk. So, you know, my first slide or first page in, and again, this remote is for Kelsey and Brian, so I hope you can sort of. This again, we'll talk a little bit about the overall system needs that are going to be required, a little bit on the decentralized plant details, you know, both, both the functional content and the look and feel. That, that has progressed considerably since the last time, so there's much more aesthetic information of the visages to show you tonight, talking about the implementation steps and those of that steps that we've, Brian referred to, to, to give us along. So, you know, the next slide again, and this is exactly what we showed last time, so this really hasn't changed. So, you know, this is initial phase one, you know, which I, I split into an A and a B mainly because of the functionality of it. So, so what we're calling Phase One A are those somewhat limited areas adjacent to the town system that are conveying to the town's plants right now and in the immediate future. So area around, you know, 15-501.
We need to turn that screen so the audience can see.
So that area around 15-501, that interchange has been connected and conveying and the area around, say at least the new school, that whole area is pretty close by and it's going into the system. So some amount of these very early stage, very sort of, you know, smallish developments to take advantage of that limited capacity you have to allocate in the plant, whether it's, you know, 30,000, 40,000, 50,000 gallons a day kind of thing that's in process now. One B is the big, of course, the major issue, and that is the decentralized plant to provide at first construction, a quarter of a million gallons of the H2O, 50,000 gallons a day. It will be permitted to go up to 500,000 with a, with a permit in terms of the operators that construct, but the site has been footprinted and planned for a million gallons a day, perhaps more if any is necessary. So it can be expanded, you know, if and when it's necessary. You know, what we're calling Phase Two is, is, you know, consummation of the Sanford transmission for up to 2 million gallons per day. So, you know, at the point that comes in, you know, beyond whatever stage the decentralized plant is at, then that would probably stabilize at that point until Sanford becomes close to tapped out, which it will at some point, you know, with the overall demands of the system we're talking about are, you know, four, five, six million gallons a day. So eventually Sanford becomes, you know, capacity limited and there will be some kind of a phase three. And again, that's several years out, so there are multiple options right now for that. There will be probably additional options by the time it's time for that. So I don't think anyone could say this is what should be done at that point, but whether that is expanding this decentralized plant, whether it's building a different, another regional plant, whether it's doing expansion work back at your plant site, whether it is getting an interbasin transfer to be able to send more to Sanford, whether it is buying water back from Sanford to get around the IPG issue, whether it's taking reuse water if they can produce it, which right now they can't, but they ever did, and take that back again to get around the interbasin transfer rules. So, or some other regional collaborative, whomever may be in that game at this point, whether it's the county or there's other, other county entities. So, you know, there are going to be a number of possibilities. The point is to just keep an eye on all those, nurture them as best it can be, so when it's time, you know, you have attractive options available to choose from and it doesn't come up from behind and blindside you at the last minute. So that, that's really about all we can say about that Phase Three right now. Does that make sense?
So you were on Phase One B, talking about the scalability of the plant, 500 million and then maybe more. How does that, how do you accommodate that variable volume with the delivery system such as the gravity pipe and/or pump stations?
Well, and I may get into this, or I can when we talk about the site and why it's there, but, you know, to the great, greatest extent, virtually all the flow generated in the North Village area will come by that plant or in very, very close proximity to the plant. We will lift off whatever the plant can handle and take, and the rest continues on its way to join up with the towns, the legacy town flow area, your plant, and goes on to Sanford. So as we may or may not need more capacity at the decentralized plant, we will lift more out of that interceptor system and feed the plants. And whatever the plant can't or doesn't need to process will go on to Sanford and to wherever Phase Three happens to be. So one of the advantages, again, it's sort of, you know, jumping ahead to the, to the site thing, but this plant originally, again, was designed and still is as sort of this showpiece sustainability statement to make and shine a light on it. It's this, you know, beacon of sustainability, not the, you know, the sewer plant you want to hide somewhere, right? So this was going to be at the interchange, the new interchange on the Bidas Chatham Parkway. But that site was always designed to accommodate a small plant, you know, maybe 100,000 gallons a day. It was never this kind of size. The site it's on now actually was designated as a potential future regional plant site when you needed a two, three, or four million gallon a day plant. It was going to be this time. But because the immediate needs have grown so rapidly that that small plant would be outstripped virtually instantly, and the way the development patterns have evolved with so much more of the development now, interest being potentially south of the Bidas as well as other areas, it just made sense to go ahead and start it over here. It still has really good visibility, Business 64, U-Banks Road. It still can be, can be configured and cited to be that showcase that people will see and can come to and that kind of thing, just as it could have at the interchange. But it has a lot more expandability, flexibility, adaptability, and lifecycle, frankly.
So is that to say that the basin it's serving, and I guess even beyond that basin could be pumping to it as well, will all of that infrastructure be sized for a much larger volume? And when it arrives to this point, it'll either go through the plant.
Right.
Go to our plant and then in the future some third possible location.
Which again, is likely to be in this general direction, right? I mean, it could be in the south part, the extreme south part of the development, you know, 4,000 acres.
Right.
But this also positions it well if and when you ever use the rest of the discharge permit into the Ha River. This is halfway there compared to where your plant is.
Got it.
Right, so it won't go into Robeson Creek anymore at some level point, right? So it's, it's a pretty good choice for, for sort of future proofing and maybe not stranding any investment and being able to take advantage. You're right, we're in the process of making these sort of, you know, intelligent decisions about how big do we make these initial pipes? So there's a balance between oversizing them too big if it's too far in the future when they can be used, and it just makes sense to build them a little smaller to start with and then expand parallel later or insert booster pump stations later that can repump and force more through. So a lot of it will be force mains, a lot of it's gravity, a lot of it's force mains. But in general, you're exactly right, that the infrastructure is designed for a fairly long lifespan. And so, you know, there won't be a lot of cases where we're up to go back and put in more pipes right where we put them in, you know, five years, it'll be a while, you know, you know, 10 years, you know? We want to get at least that kind of long run of our infrastructure. We don't want to, and you don't either, you've been in that business, you don't want to tear up the street that you just tore up, you know, four years ago to put another pipe in. That's not popular with the residents.
I think it's popular.
So, does that answer the question?
I have a question, Mr. Baldwin. The fact that you're referencing that will be located on U-Banks Road, is that correct?
Generally the corner of U-Banks and Business 64. It's, it's a little ways off the intersection, it's closer to the creek that comes through, at that low spot where you're moving from U-Banks toward town.
Well, Commissioner Bonis is not here, but that was his question.
Okay.
Basically, how did you make that determination that it should be at U-Banks Road?
Okay, well hopefully most of those, I just answered.
We'll look at that.
In addition, there's some geophysical reasons for that.
Okay.
With the confluence of the creeks and where that comes, so more of that system can be gravity versus pressure because of where it's located. So there's also some, some energy conscious reasons to put it there as well.
Okay.
In addition to what I just said.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to.
Sure.
Since he had asked that, I wanted to go on into that.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
All right, so with that phasing, this next two slides that are in your deck, I've segmented it a little bit to make it not quite as confusing as I had to start with, and it's probably still going to be plenty confusing on the next slide, but what we took is sort of this near-term flow projections. And again, since we're really talking about this sort of critical period before Sanford is ready, is really what this is dealing with, roughly three years, this, this next And so let's just orient you on this slide a little bit. You know, the vertical axis, you know, from the bottom to the top is, is gallons per gallon. The horizontal progression is complete time, you know, broken up, sort of each, each division is two months at a time, and so this stretches out until 2021, basically. The reality is, you know, 2020, trust me, 2020 and 2021 are in that three to four years kind of range. And, and the coding here, the, the blue line at the bottom is month by month, the projections for what the magnitude of site plan approvals will be absorbed. So that's sort of the pace of development, you know, sort of instant, sort of a month at a time. So that bottom line, that blue line is, is that month to month, what kind, what it looks like from the projection of absorptions that was done, what is likely to develop, and what kind of flow does that need to develop? From left to right, the red line is the accumulation of each of those individual allocation requests, if you will. So the blue line is feeding the red line, so the red line is to date, at any point along that line, is up to that point, that's how much flow came in in, in, in terms of the site approval requests that come in. Now you've got two other lines that essentially parallel those lines, they're simply shifted in time, a little bit later. And the reason is at site plan approval submission, there is no real allocation at that point. The green line is when there is an actual allocation required, because that's when the sewer permits from the state are required, and at that point you have to have something to allocate the flow to. So that just shifts that out a few months. It's basically the duration of the site plan approval process before you submit the permits for the sewers. And then the purple line, the IIs, might be a different color on this frame, is when that turns into actual flow. And now we have toilets flushing and flow showing up somewhere to be dealt with. So it's site plan approval, which is just sort of a heads up. The green line is allocation, it's paper, but it's allocation and it's important and it's necessary for permitting. And the purple line is you need to have something that can handle the flow and treat it and do something. Okay, does that all make sense? Okay, so the next slide is where it gets a little more complicated. So onto those curves, I've superimposed the horizontal line is the initial capacity of the decentralized plant that we're talking about, 250,000 gallons per day. So that is sort of the ceiling of what, once it's built, what we'll have available to treat this way, what's available. So that's again, like we said, that's the interim or stopgap before Sanford, as, as well as the other reasons for this plant, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So these boxes and these arrows are illustrating based on scheduling when certain things are either expected to happen or have to happen so that this plant is there to accommodate this. Because the, really looking from right to left, the key point is that initiation of operation box in the fall of '18 is when the flow starts to show up. So, you know, as of now, in less than 18 months, we think flow's going to start showing up to meet with the handle. So really, if you start from left to right, what we've looked at is, is when do we need to get an authorization to construct from the state to start working on bricks and mortar in the plant? That's going to take, you know, probably a year, maybe a little less to build that. So that's a key milestone is, is getting a permit from the state to construct. And we'll be submitting plans shortly, they're close to finish for permitting purposes at least.
Tim, where's that footfall?
That is really a fall of this year.
Serious authorization.
Authorization to construct. Right, sorry, I, we're engineers, always talking as acronyms, you know, if you couldn't biofollow, you'd have no idea what I'm saying.
Got it.
This scheduled NPDS, this is what we've been talking about, about the agreement to share the NPDS permit, the discharge capability. We're certainly going to reuse every drop we can reuse, but in the early years, there won't be that much demand for it, so it's going to be someplace else to put the rest of the treated water. And so the discharge is, is very important, now that has to happen at least before we go into operation, right, which is slated for the middle of '18, fall of '18 at the worst. Now it takes, it can take longer than a year to get an NPDS permit or modification to it, which is why we've been talking about this for a long time now. The good news is what it takes to get started is less than that, which is this, and I'm going to jump ahead to sort of the next steps in the end, but this letter of intent is what the state wants to see, just to see that, okay, everybody's serious, things are moving along to getting this worked out, so, okay, we'll let you submit your application for an NPDS modification. We don't want you to give that to us unless it seems like everybody is going to at some point get on the same page with us. So they, they said, we don't have to have final agreement, all the details, all those glory details that need to be worked out, we need that before you're going to get the permit, but before you submit for it, we want to see that things are moving that way. And that's what that letter of intent is all about, and that's what needs to happen before we can give the state a permit package, which we needed to already give them, frankly. So we're in the red zone on that one right now, so that's very important to move that along.
Why does the NPDS permit need modification?
Because right now this plant isn't covered by any discharge permit. Your current plant is covered to discharge and to break. No other plant is promoted to discharge.
But the fact that there's not a permanent plant, correct? That's using that new, that old discharge location.
Correct. So we're telling the state, okay, we're going to build this great, wonderful statement of sustainability treatment plant. And I say, great, where's the water going? They say, well, we're going to reuse every drop we can possibly use. I say, great, where is that committed? Where do you have firm capacity that you control to use all that reuse water? We don't have all of that if it's being used in part for irrigation purposes or totally guaranteed, how many times people flush toilets and they're, you know, use it for that, et cetera. Okay, great, where's the rest of it going? Well, it's, it's the sharing of the discharge permit that was already acquired 11 years ago, largely for this purpose in part. Okay, great, do you have an agreement to do that? Yeah, we're working on that. Okay, great, show me where you are with that. You know, which again, led to this letter of intent, say, see, the parties are working on this. No, all the I's have dotted, no, the T's aren't all across, and that's okay, but that's the direction everyone's moving and everyone is, is collaborative in this entire adventure we're on, right? So that's what they want to see, to say, okay, all right, prepare the package for the modification and send it to us and we'll, you know, we'll put it in the corner, let it collect the requisite amount of dust, and then we'll review it, and by the time we get ready to issue it, we want to see that you got the rest of the details worked out.
I understand the permit attaching to our, what I guess you all like to call the legacy plant, but why couldn't you run the water from U-Banks Road into the legacy plant and have it discharged directly out of there? It sounds like it wouldn't be amended or modified.
Except that the legacy plant can't meet the new discharge request. It hasn't, that was where the decision came between do you upgrade the plant, expand the plant, go to Sanford, et cetera, et cetera, because in its current state, it can't meet that requirement.
If the, if the product coming out of the reclamation plant can meet that and the pipe just happens to end up at the legacy plant, how does that not work?
It does. It does, it simply has to be codified.
But it's still a modification.
It's still a modification to your permit.
Correct.
So you have it, I mean, you have the permit and you actually got it modified from 1.75 to 1.249, 1.25, which is again, what dovetails and creates that extra 500,000, 499,000. Right now, over and above what your plant is permitted for or designed for, to use the rest of that Robeson discharge while your plant is still active before Sanford is done. So both plants will be running for a while, and then once Sanford is done, obviously your plant won't be, and will only be using a portion of even that 499, but the permit stays in effect, it's still there, but it's bannered at some point, from whatever point. But in the short run, while your plant's still running, there's only an excess of 499, which is why we sort of crafted the staging of this that way, first 250, then 500. And it's not bad, it just didn't happen. Does that make sense?
Can we let John know that the question was asked by Chandler Baldwin about the location of maybe the plant at U-Banks Road? And Tim Baldwin indicated that for one thing, the geophysical details of where the plant was relocated, the confluence of the streams.
I'm happy to reprise that if you indulge, okay? Right, so you probably recall, originally this plant was located at the interchange, Jetham Parkway and the Bidas. And it was set up or destined or planned to be a relatively small plant, still this sort of sustainability statement, the showpiece, this thing we want people to see and advance the cause and all that, but it was never going to be a big plant at that location. In fact, there were plans that if needed, there would be a larger plant constructed elsewhere. The elsewhere is actually this site that it's on right now, was at one point designated as a potential for a regional plant, collaborative, individual, whatever it was, but that's a good location. So because it has more ability to expand and get larger at that site, which is again, one of the reasons this moved is the pace of the early year development has accelerated from what the projections were at that point, and the pace of when Sanford would be ready hasn't accelerated to match that, and so it's created the need for this plant to start bigger than it was going to start and probably finish bigger than it was going to finish before Sanford's ready. And that site at the interchange couldn't accommodate that. We're wedged in, there's a lot of steep slopes on that site, once you got too far away from the roadways and stuff, so this is a better site to start a bigger plant, and it's a better site if it needs to be expanded in the future, you know, it could be a Phase Three here after Sanford is tapped out, then perhaps there's a collaboration to expand at this site. As the mayor said, you know, geophysically, you know, the creeks come together where this is now, where we're sort of at a high spot at the interchange, so that is going to enable more gravity system to be installed, less pumping systems, so there's an, you know, there's an, was it an energy conscious reason that this is a good site for it as well? So those are really the dominant reasons that that's where it is where it is now. Does that make sense?
And I'm still hungry for more information. I'm still hungry for an engineer's perspective of the topography, your writing for people early. And I have a long list of questions, so I can share those with you. I just think that if town were embarking on this investment, I would expect that we would do that kind of thorough analysis of the town's opportunities, various sites, and I would expect that it'd be in writing, so since we're looking to partner, I'd like it to be in writing. So.
You have to share the questions with me.
I will.
Sure.
Tim, I have one question.
Sure.
Can we go back to that Phase B? I think Michael mentioned something about this. This expandable to 1.0 MGD, that's, to me, unless I missed something, that's the first time I've heard of that, because I understood we were at 0.25 to 0.50. What kind of timeline is that?
Well, all right, let me say, yes, we are, the initial construction is to be 250, 0.25, 250,000. It will be hard designed and permitted for 500,000, which matches the excess of the NPDS permit amount, right? So that syncs up for the state's view, so that permit size makes sense. The site. The site has been planned and footprinted to go to a million or beyond. There's room to do that, we've looked at that situation, so that can be expanded, but there is no reason to try to permit the plant for that when we don't have receiving capacity for it, and the state's not gonna permit it for in excess of whatever it has available for receiving capacity that's from. So, but down the road, there will be that, because we'll have a record of reuse use that is translating to a firm capacity, and/or, if you needed it to, your plant won't be discharging anymore, so the balance of the Robeson discharge is now available, one's credit him with it, and if ever at some point down the road, the rest of the permit will end to Ha, which is what we want you to do, but see what happens as we down the road. So that's why I'm saying one, because we, as I said, build 250 right away, permit for 500, where it's on the shelf, and all it takes is bricks and mortar at that point, the state doesn't have anything more to say about it at that point, than 500. But knowing that the site can take one or greater if it ever needs to, it will have to go back from permitting at that point.
Another way to say that, that I think in the way that you're thinking about it, is our existing plant max is at 700. We got a permit, let's use round numbers, go for 1.25. So they're gonna take that 500 and be able to discharge at Robeson, because Robeson discharge is the limit at 1.25. It could be bigger in the future, if and when we start pumping Sanford, we're no longer discharging to Robeson. So now, 1.25 is going to Robeson, we start pumping now, maybe 500 or 250, or whatever is going in Robeson, that plant can expand and put 1.25 in the Robeson.
And frankly, it can even expand, because some of it's going to reuse, we hope a lot of it.
Well, but you treated the plant.
We treated the plant more.
The max put is 1.25, go and send lots.
Correct.
Other places.
And once we have empirical data to show the state, then that, you know, looks more like firm capacity. Right now, you know, planning isn't firm capacity, we don't think so either. If you show a track record, this gets used, you know, sort of monthed and without reliably, then it's a different conversation with the state.
So I understand why you would do some in Robeson Creek, only you're not sending all of it every time in the short term.
Right, because timing wise, flow starts showing up next fall, it can't go anywhere else.
And also, we're gonna be, we'll be sending raw eftol into Sanford, they're gonna be treated to a very high level, and that's a very costly endeavor, so you wouldn't spend all that money, well, I guess you would, and then just pump it on to Sanford, but we wouldn't wanna do that.
A, yeah, he wants it there, it would make sense, and B, again, this is also the facility that's gonna supply the reclaim water to service the 3M contract.
But the reason we wouldn't want you to send it to Sanford is, we wanna use 2 million gallons Sanford and not, you know, we wanna put...
We're using our rope, we're not giving it up, we're using it.
I thought this new plant was gonna be discharged into the Ha River.
No.
No?
No, it's going to Robeson.
You're talking about the Jordan Lake rules?
No, I was talking about this right here.
No, I mean, you have a permit to put 1.97 million gallons a day into the Ha River, and that was part of your overall MPDES permit, so you have some going to Robeson, some going to Ha River. You have an exercise there, it could at some point, but that's another conversation, and that's another set of permits, and another set of exchanges with a lot of people.
So I think we're at a max of 322.
Correct. So it started out as 1.75 mill to Robeson, and the balance 2.47, I think, into Ha, and you, as amended your permit to shift that to Robeson, because there were concerns about aquatic habitat and all that, I think in Robeson as well. All right, so we're back on the graph from, from P, and I think we basically discussed this, that again, flow starts showing up next fall, and so that's the requirement, getting Robeson permitted, the plant built at that point. The other key thing is, if you look at where the, now the purple line crosses the blue dotted horizontal line, at that point, the decentralized plant is full to, and that's projected in the summer of 19. Sanford is not gonna be ready in the summer of 19. So at that point, Sanford's not ready, this plant will have to be expanded again, unless, well, it's still gonna have to be expanded whether it's being discharged or not, I was about to say, well, but that's the track record of the reuse, but we still need to do more. So I think it's likely this plant gets expanded to 500 before Sanford is done, unless something happens, you know, very aggressively with that schedule line, I can't see how it can be. Or if this slows down, for whatever reason, the flow really doesn't come, that's another possibility, but I don't think that's realistic either.
So scheduled operations?
We'd like to start up operations and prove it out before it has to, that's how I speak. So one of the things we're doing as well is providing a shunt from 15501 over to this plant, so that we can get some flow to seep the plant and get it started, and divert some of that flow that right now is, either right now or in the very near future, will be going on down 15501 to your system, to your plant, to the legacy plant, existing plant. When this plant's ready to start, then we'll siphon off some of that flow to get this plant started. It won't be long before that line to your plant cuts out anyway, and the rest of the flow from 15501 is gonna have to get shunted over this way anyway, whether it goes to this plant or goes to Sanford. It will be shunted along Suggles Road, across the Bygones, and get down to the area of this plant, and either be treated here or be sent on its way to Sanford, one way or the other.
Tim, what's your estimate of the volume of, uh, flow that would be shunted from 15501 during the startup period?
Well, I mean, right now, there's not a heck of a lot there, right? You've got a few things, so, you know, so we'd like to take, if it's only to start up the plant and get the bugs growing and happy and all of that, then we probably want maybe 15,000 or 20,000 gallons a day if we can get it, you know, and after that, it's whatever it needs, you know, and once, you know, once again, your line has some, has some bottlenecks, if you will, and some restrictions to move a lot of flow in excess of what those systems are designed for right now. So they're getting pretty close to where there's, that's probably the limit to capacity, unless you wanna do some collection system improvements in town to alleviate those bottlenecks. That's not easy or cheap.
I'm embarrassed to have to ask this for even more detail, but what are we talking about? Are we talking about Northwood High School? Are we talking about Bojen? Are we talking about everything in the 44 acres? What, what would you be pulling from that 15501 area to start the bugs?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're actually working with Fred and others on how do we configure the pumping stations, there are, there's a couple of pumping stations up there now, High School, Long Island, and all that, so those can be modified to be able to send flow in either direction.
I want to know, you know, there's some residences in there, are they also on town sewer?
I think so. And then, of course, when the 44 acres happens in here, that's a whole nother ball of games, that's a lot more flow than that system can handle. So most of that's gonna have to come down this way. It can't get through town right now. So, so again, it's, it's to start off, just to get some food for the bugs, get them going, and then after that, it's what needs to come, because it can't go any other way after that. All right, so the next, you saw this at our last, at our last session, so this was again, sort of the overview of the facility and sort of the key points that we wanted to make sure you're aware of in terms of what we're doing there. And again, you know, we're intending this to be a, it's a tired sort of acronym and statement, there's no state of the art, everybody wants to talk state of the art, but, but at that level, certainly the, the limits this is treated for are exceptionally stringent, because it's not just reclaim, there's well beyond reclaim standards to be able to discharge with the nutrient limits that are proposed for Jordan and what has shown up in your permit for once you expand. So it's, it's very advanced, as well as some other, some other more sustainable sort of practices, like hydroponics and fixed film, maybe we've talked a little bit about that before, so, you know, again, a very advanced facility that also incorporates a little more natural treatment processes as well. Now, it's not fully natural because of the stringent limits we hit, have to hit, it incorporates a lot more technology than it would have to if it was just reclaiming one. So, which, you know, there's a, you know, there's a consequence of that in terms of some of the processes are a little more complex, there's, there's some that you have a choice between power and chemicals to make that work, so there's some of those kinds of things that you'd love to have something that didn't use any of that, right? But you can't beat these discharge limits doing it that well. We claim to have a better chance of, but that's not good enough, your discharge permit. So, but, we're doing both, there just has to be some of both. Talking about...
Can I, I should go back to the chart for just one second.
Sure.
The, it says initiation of operation required September 18. What is, is that for, what is that?
Flow that's showing up that can't go anywhere else, because there's no more room that we have in the current plans. And, and the allocations for that flow are in that same loop too. That was the other thing that I glossed over, I think it shows up here later, we talked about last time, is, you know, once that plant is permitted, then we can allocate against it. You know, we have, we have a representation from the state that, you know, as long as you have it permitted, plant and expansion, and you're moving on it, even if it's not there yet, we'll let you allocate against it. But to allocate against it, you need both that and there was some assurance of the discharge permit, both of those things.
So we need to start applying, or we really need to apply for that two months from here?
No, we need to apply for that, like, three months ago.
Yeah, but I mean, it's absolutely...
We need to receive it, no, no, we need to apply already, because it takes, it can easily take a year to get that modification. They're moving at glacial pace right now, so that, that's, that's the fear, is you really have no control over how long it takes EPA to process, this can't be handled just in Raleigh, this goes to EPA in Atlanta too. And, you know, frankly, EPA's upset with us right now, the state, because of the Jordan rules extension. EPA wanted 2019 for implementation, now the state's in 2020, they're making noise about 2022, EPA's not happy.
If I'm being petulant, EPA will...
Yeah, well, but that's why your permit expired a year ago, it hasn't been renewed yet, largely because of that. So the, the advantage here is, frankly, we'll be compliant and more with those limits when this plant's built. So, you know, Mr. EPA Administrator, you know, work with us on this, and you get what you want earlier than you wanted. This flow's fully compliant a year ahead of what you wanted, let alone what the new rule dates are. So, you know, you have a vested interest in helping facilitate this. And we'll see what response we'll get to that argument when it's time, right?
Tim, I'm trying to find corollary between the, the graph and that particular date. And the red line is basically site plan approval, so you've stated, and on a site plan, what the uses are in there, or what the flow's going to be.
Right.
How related to be.
Yeah.
And that green line is where it's actually allocated.
Correct.
And September 2018, the allocation's above 300,000.
Correct.
And that's when the plant must be operational?
It's, it's coincidental that that leader, the vertical leader from scheduled operation crosses, all three of those lines cross at that point. First, the green is scheduled, that's what we had in our projected schedule. The red is what has to happen, so there's some flow in some cases between the green and the red, right? But again, remember, or let me better explain, that, again, that when the plant is permitted, and it's gonna be permitted for 500, and we're only building for 250, the state has said, they'll let us allocate against the 500, and that's where we talked about, that can even be used by other town development, that if you run out of allocation in your current plant, there will be potential for excess allocation room here, even though eventually that flow really goes Sanford, the state knows that. But that's okay, it can be, at least the paper can be processed, knowing that, as long as we, you, they all know that the receiving capacity will be there for it when it needs it, when the flow shows up. So again, that was one of the benefits of going ahead and permitting this 500 right away, and I think that's what we're building, for paper allocation privilege.
But until September 2018, well, I guess, except for the seeping, it's gonna go on with 15.25 for several months. And this is not need pumping to Robeson yet?
Yes, it, it will, it can't go in operation until there's a place to put it.
Right, but until it's operational, it won't be pushing treated eftol.
It has to coincide, right? They both have to, no worse than finish to finish. When the plant is ready to process something, then it has to have a place to go, which means the discharge has to be there. So the permit has to be there.
So the allocation of the, the, okay, and then the purple line, which is actually the tributary flow, is actually still very small?
Yeah, it's just starting to actually show up.
Okay, I'm getting it.
Yeah, there's a lag there.
Okay.
I'll do the math here, but it's, you know, it's roughly a year before the allocation shows up the flow. Okay. Jason, thank you.
Paul, I did have one more question.
Sure.
And it's about Robeson Creek. There are no concerns in reference to increasing that flow into Robeson Creek?
No, in fact, there were factions that wanted that flow increased, that you originally had a 750,000 gallon permit, and there were groups that supported the shifting of flow from the Ha to Robeson to enable there to be more base flow in the creek as a benefit to aquatic habitat and bank stabilization water in the creek and all that. So actually, there were folks that didn't want that to go on.
Yeah, they didn't want it to, they didn't want that to go into the Ha, that's true. But I was just wondering, on state level, is that something that was of concern in reference to going to Robeson Creek?
No, it went through pretty easily, as I recall, and it's all been approved.
I know it was...
It all went pretty easily, there wasn't any major...
I was surprised, maybe because one time, that was supposed to have been an impaired stream creek at one time, when I initially was on the commit, become, became commission, that was actually impaired.
Well, but it's impaired for different things too, along the creek in different sections, so while it can be impaired near the discharge point, chlorophyll A, or dissolved oxygen, or whatever, there's other negative impairments if that water wasn't there in terms of aquatic habitat, in terms of stream erosion, you know, having the stream dry out and wet, and dry and wet is not good, because the roots die and then the banks wash. So keeping that healthy or offsets the other negatives of putting more into that particular location when it finally gets to the river, in that area, in that sort of still area, backwater area, pseudo estuary area, right? And so it was overall deemed that that was a net positive at that time. And certainly, what we're putting in there, there's virtually no nutrients in it anyway, so it doesn't really cause a problem, putting just about as clean as you can make it. So, get all the benefits of the wetting the creek, and none of the downside of nutrient overload. Get all the benefits of the, of wetting the creek and none of the downside of nutrient overload. So we're back to the hex again, and again, those sort of key points, we've talked now a lot about the shared, we've talked a few times with Brian Teadoff, that again, this is a third-party privately built, no town funds involved. That we've talked about the arrangement that the town would retain the customer interface, that the town would be the only customer of the plant, and then you, your customers are still your customers. So how you do it and you set rates, that's all entirely still up to you. And then again, we think a major function of this plant is a destination, is a demonstration facility, is an education facility. You want this to be that, you want this to be a place you don't hide it anymore. In fact, you highlight it and you bring people in for whatever purposes, whether it's research or education, at whatever level you want to do that. We probably had conservatively, we had five hundred tours at Emory, so that's, I've been there weeks, and there were ten a week. It's insane. The appetite for this is strong. There's a lot of curiosity, people enjoy it. So I think that will happen here until-
It's a relative foregone, you know, or like within, uh, up toward it, and it's-
Mm-hmm.
It's a distinct, it's got a very possible-
Yeah, we have some of the same stuff here, we have some other stuff that isn't there here that's sort of, you know, perhaps too. We're driven by the discharge permit, partially because technology marches that. So, equally interested. Okay, so we've got a, we're done with the first hex again. The next slide is, is again, just sort of some overall, I call them details, but sort of attributes of the plant. We've talked about the location already, in terms of where it is. You know, the service area generally as the entire north area of the development and adjacent portions, if, if and when necessary. That we would have this interconnection and shunt, if you will, from the fifteen five oh one interchange area. And we also have an interconnection going down to the town current wastewater plant. Both for eventually conveying raw wastewater, well, at least two parts. Eventually conveying raw wastewater onto Sanford and conveying reclaimed water for its continuized journey to three M, both of which sort of, you know, the plant is a waystation for both of those things. Talked about the, the sharing of discharge capacity into Robeson, setting our river off to the side and remaining in reserve for whatever purpose decide for the two at some point. Talked about this plant would service the three M contracts, so that can be continued or even expanded. And, you know, maximize any other reuse opportunities there are for this water. Like, you know, our goal would be to not discharge anything if we could do it. You know, when we first did master planning for the development, there's perhaps two million gallons a day of reuse opportunity in this at all. So this, this plant will be capped out and there will still be a reuse need, and I don't think that will be that far down the road.
So at what point might we see a dark green line applied to your beautiful and complex chart that shows us the development of that reuse opportunity?
That is essentially, and we did reuse projections when we did original master planning, so I can, you know, I can draw that line. There's other things that are going to affect, affect the shape of that line as well, some of which is in the offing. So, you know, how much do you, you know, do you force its use? You know, there's lots of common areas to irrigate, if you want to irrigate. What, what sort of gets priority? Certainly toilet flushing in the commercial areas where it's already established, you know, that kind of thing has to get priority. There's competition for, you know, irrigation is, is displacing potable is a very high good use for. Rather than irrigate the potable water, of course. So there's movements to prevent residential toilet flushing. When that happens, that creates a very large demand. You know, there's other, you know, environmental type demonstration projects or usages, whether you've got into, you know, wetland augmentation and restoration. Obviously, you know, still, I don't say silly little things, but minor demands for dust control, for nursery usage, you know, that kind of thing can all be done. That's not a huge number, of course, but it's a number. And, you know, we politically hinted or talked about eventual use of it for potable reuse, which is permit. Nobody has done it yet, but it's permit here. And the plant is a stone's throw in the development, eventually we'll have reclaimed lines up in that area that will be very close. So if and when that potable water source becomes very scarce and very precious, you know, that, you could think about starting to implement that here, which again, creates a very large demand, like that, you do up to twenty percent, right, if you're on it, so.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping and guessing that some of that will be covered in a comprehensive water resource master plan process that the screws back is, is beginning to work on. But I think that that would be a reasonable and logical thing to include in these kinds of views. To the extent that you're able to make those projections with all of the caveats and qualifications that you've touched upon, I'm sure it goes much deeper than that. And that would be reassuring to me. As well as the discussion of what we needed on Townsend, a policy, you hinted at policy. I'm sure there's questions of differentiated pricing, probably?
Well, and that's, that's something to be talked about and set, that certainly hasn't been touched yet in terms of, you know, what kind of cost recovery charge system would seem reasonable for the reuse system. It's certainly displacing a resource that would have to be bought and paid for, that at least would- For that much, you know, people can elect not to irrigate, but otherwise they would be potable, so that's a displacement that otherwise pays. So, so yeah, that is something that would need to be worked out. From all intents and purposes, it's almost a third part of the enterprise fund, or usually we're, three M water. And in some places, storm water, of course, but not, not yet.
And, and I can imagine there's all kinds of complexity there with the metering. And I'm also curious about what, what insights we could gain as regards those reuse opportunities that would require tie-ins or interconnections, I don't know what that's called, and who would pay for those?
What do you mean by the interconnections?
Well, I'm, I'm guessing that the purple pipe is being laid, but I'm guessing that it's not going to be connected to the houses. Am I wrong? Am I am I wrong?
Right, right now, the dual plumbing all comes together and all ties into the potable line right now. So yes, eventually it's the equivalent of, of a meter connection for a water service, virtually identical. Right now, obviously, it's not connected. It would have to be done, paid for, expected, you know, make sure there's no inadvertent cross-connection during that process. So there'll be a, a policy and engineering details and a way to do that, which has been done lots of places, of course, but it's just another one of your sort of policies and procedures in your utility toolbox.
So will any commercial facilities be built with the connection to the purple pipe?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, right now, the, the, correct me if I'm wrong guys, the covenants, Chad Hart's saying, you know, all buildings have to be dual-locked. And putting purple pipe everywhere.
Dual plums, but connected or not?
Well, right now, not, because there's nothing in the purple pipes right now. So we can't let them connect because then they don't have any water. So it's only connected into the potable right now, both of their dual plumbing systems then come together and connect into the potable. Everything goes through the potable meter right now, and then splits. When it's time to fill those pipes with reclaimed water, go back in and divorce those pipes. So the purple ties in with the purple and the potable with the potable, and that interconnect goes away.
So wouldn't we want to do everything we could in the direction of making that as easy as turning a valve, perhaps?
You can't have a cross-connect even with a valve.
Okay.
You can't have a cross-connect with a backflow preventer, it requires an air dam, so it has to be physically disconnected.
But, I mean, are we talking about a gap that's from here to the street or from-
No, it's right here on the table, it's right in front of you. So, yeah, it's easy, it takes doing, it takes pipe fitting and that kind of stuff. But it's right there and it's built with that in mind.
Doesn't require a backflow, requires a plumber?
Name of the pipe that this is a big-
Right, and you're right, yes, it should be done by a plumber who's trained and understands what they're doing and, you know, avoid any-
So, now, does that describe both residential and commercial, or are we talking about only on the commercial side?
No, it, it, it will be both. Now, again, right now, we can't do it on residential, other than irrigation systems and stuff. We can't have the interior dual plumbing connected because the regson influence to permit it right now. But eventually it will. And so again, have the same mechanical provisions in place to do that when the time comes, so that you're not having to rework, tear up things that you, you know, you already have torn up once. Given that it's, I think, a fairly, fairly short horizon. Because if we're going to be fifteen to twenty years, then I'd say no, we'll just refit it later. But you know how hard it is to refit an established development or neighborhood, you know, it's, it's just not very practical on the time, so it's much better. Although this is restricted to pretty small area, as long as pipes in the street, like you said, that's the hard part. That's the difficult part, so we do later, so that is now.
It's not only in the streets, it's being spelt to each parcel.
Yeah.
So they should have to dig up the sidewalk and extend it a little.
You know, it's sitting there, ready to go. Yeah, it's just a really smart thing to do. I mean, there are, there are a few entities I know that force developers to put in dry sewers, even when there's no sewer plant for it to go to, just because someday that area will get sewed. Aren't many of them, but there were some that did that, which is pretty far-sighted and not without its arguments. Got done, and, and many of those have sewer running up right now.
Question about the three M reuse contract. I know the town has been servicing that and I think that we make, what, about ten thousand a year from that? So in the future, that ten thousand goes to Chatham Park, is that-
Well, that, no, that's, again, the way it's tracking is the town will be this plant's only customer, then you resell to everybody else, whether it's water, whether it's sewer or rezero. So that stays however you deal with three M, and then there'll be a different agreement how to deal with the operating entity at this point.
I understood our plant was going to continue to reuse water to three M.
Now, your, your plant, once you go to Sanford, your plant is going to be redone, repurposed, reconstructed, where it's not treating anymore. It's, it's equalization and pumping to somebody-
Be a holding area more or less?
Excuse me, sir?
Be a holding area more or less?
More or less, it's a big glorified pump station in equalization basin. Right, the, the treatment stuff will not be working anymore. I'm sure there's thoughts on how that's going to be done, you know, what's going to be kept and saved up, what's going to be removed. And then anything sits there for fifteen years can be usable down the road. But when other things maybe don't get used right away, then maybe there's a use for it later. They can be preserved for future use. I'm sure there's thought about that going on right now with the engineers.
Oh, is, is reuse water actually a profitable enterprise, or it's just being done because of the, um, green nature of the, of the development?
Yes. Yes, I mean, it, it, it's a tricky kind of answer, because it should be, it's not always done that way. It's certainly, again, it's serving a valuable purpose that is worth paying for, that for that purpose, things are being paid for right now, to get water, to do those things. So if whatever water is being furnished is suitable to task, there should be a cost recovery mechanism to provide that. Now, it might be less expensive than potable, there's some validity to that. Although it costs more to make reclaimed water than it costs to make potable water. So the cost of provision is higher, but there may be a perceived diminished value in that, well, you have to treat that anyway. You're making something anyway that you gotta just dump and get rid of. So is it, do you, is it full cost pricing when you're sort of having to do it whether you sell it or not? You could argue no, that there should be some discount mechanism for that, but it shouldn't be free. And part of it is to build acceptance and to build momentum for this. So to some extent, yeah, there's sort of intro deals, right, like a more gracious way of saying, uh, it makes some sense to, to get things started that way. And again, it's, you know, to some extent, other than, sure, there's costs incurred to put in the distribution system and to manage that and maintain it, so there is some added cost, it's not completely free to queue, but the marginal cost of that's pretty low. Compared with, you know, what you're already doing anyway. So it can be, and, and again, it's an enterprise fund on a municipal basis, this isn't a money-making enterprise, not supposed to be that, right? But, but it is a revenue stream and should be, and done reasonably.
Or is it just the life, are, are, is there a capacity for a bit longer?
Oh, absolutely, and frankly, that's, that's something that rarely gets quantified in a rate-making process. But if you really looked at it and, and the value of deferred investment in the potable side, even if the water was available, that deferral is valuable. The reality is that water isn't or may not always be available. It isn't in some places, it hasn't been, and it again, won't be. And so then there's a tremendous value in avoiding, you know, trying to, trying to preserve this resource. And again, getting to where you're matching a source to the need, you're matching water to the need. So again, I had that slide of you once with, you know, a picture of my toilet, my dog drinking out of my toilet. And it's like, I'm not supposed to come down toilet, why do you put potable water in? You know, which is, I don't know, why do we? If that's the only source of water we have, but, but it makes much more sense to match the quality with what it's for. And not spend money to go past that if you don't need to. Absolutely. Because that's the one thing, a lot of the work in wastewater gets done biologically, it's bugs and, and all of that. You know, a lot of the work in water treatment, it's all energy and chemicals, it's all FISCA, and so that always has a cost. Where you get some free work done, if you will, you know, in wastewater.
Can you say it was more expensive, costly to treat to reuse standards than to create potable water?
It can be, and it depends on the potable water sourcing and what needs to be done. But yeah, there's, it can be, and depends on the quality of wastewater sometimes too. Certainly in our case, it will be a lot more because we're treating, in a lot of ways, we're treating better than potable. And our disinfection processes, this is probably too techy for all of you, but the requirement in a water system, there's a four log reduction of certain pathogens. With what we have in this plant, we're expecting an eleven log reduction of pathogens. That's nine nines to the right of the decimal place in percentage. Four log is two nines to the right of the decimal point. Part of it is the membranes. Now, if you had membranes at the plant, you'd be achieving some of those kinds of reductions as well. But the membranes physically remove all of certain of these things, Cis, bacteria, that all comes out of the membranes. The only thing that gets through is viruses, it's all that's left to kill. Where a regular filter, you're getting other things going through there besides viruses. So we have at least three barriers in this plant to pathogens. Most water plants have two, at most. But, anyway, sorry for getting in the weeds. And in fact, that's, I believe it's a process flow schematic, but that's without the ozone. If we add the ozone, that's another one. We don't, right now, that's contingent, and if we find just the ultraviolet radiation, we do have provisions to add ozone if we want to or need to. And ozone is a much stronger disinfectant than chlorine, strong disinfectant essentially to, has a penalty, there's some energy penalty with ozone, which is why we're not doing it right away. But one of the things it's really good at is color. And so, again, if we get to a residential toilet flush, if we have any tinge of color, it really magnifies in a white porcelain bowl, that's going to affect acceptance, I think. So at that point, we might add ozone to take care of the color. Because it looks gray. Now, it'll, it'll be just a hint, it can't say yellow, but it won't be perfectly clear, potentially, we don't think it will be, we don't know, but we're going to account for that, but, but it really magnifies. You put it in the glass, you wouldn't see it, and put it in a white toilet, you'll see it. Okay? I think we talked about the location already, so that next one is simply, just to have it in slide, that placeholder to talk about it and why we did, we already dealt with that one. So, the next slide is one of the non-recycled contents. We had an older sort of placeholder, an older site plan in the first package back in October. This is a freshened version, so there's some tweaking that's been done. You know, at first glance, it'll look very, very similar, but there has been quite a bit of change to this. This is probably ninety-nine plus percent the one that will be coming in for a site plan approval very soon. There's a couple of things that will need to be shown at this that aren't shown at right now, is why I'm saying that, but it's, the footprint's fixed at what we're doing here now, so, my problem is stand up and sort of point a way to, if you want to sort of review what this is doing and what it's wearing, do that.
I'd like to know if there's any odors in this. I mean, in a traditional wastewater treatment plant, can be pretty stinky having driven on Interstate forty, past the Durham plant and past the belt, you wash the plant down off and leave that road in the sand.
And the other one, past the Crabtree Pump Station on the Belt Line, when I was there.
Yeah. What's this going to smell like?
It won't. Now, it's not because those products don't smell, okay? But, you know, we take great pains for, for containment and treatment of the off gas of, of the odors. So, everything...
So, it's a closed system?
Except for the hydroponic reactors, everything else is covered and captured and routed through an odor cleansing system, largely biofilters is what we're doing rather than chemical strippers, we'd rather deal with biofilters. So, the, and the reality is that there are two places in a wastewater plant that generate the lion's share is charitable, virtually all of the odors come at the very beginning of the plant where there's screening and solids being removed, and at the tail end with bio solids, sludge, with residuals. Those are the two places. In a, in a consistently run, managed, everything in between, you generally don't get any obnoxious odors unless something goes wrong. If it's supposed to be aerated and it isn't aerated, if they turn off, then it goes out there, it's not, you know, the, there are anaerobic stages up front for biological phosphorus removal, that will smell if you haven't covered them and evacuated. But most of the old treatment plants don't have any, they don't have any of these covers and very limited odor scrubbing. Usually on the sludge side, a lot of them will. Usually the headworks is sort of one of them, there's not a lot of that done, but these are totally encapsulated and evacuated and scrubbed. So, we had, the Emery Plant, we did, we had the, you know, Vice President for Finance tell us, he, he wants to be able to stick his nose a foot from that plant anywhere and not smell anything. That was in our contract, and we passed.
I'm sure the neighbors in the Chappell would like the same feeling. What's it going to do, talk me about, you started earlier?
That's probably a question for somebody else, but it, it will have less of any kind of negative impact when you, when they see this and smell it than if they were next door to a old treatment plant, I'm sure. I'm sure nobody right now is going to think they want to be next door to a treatment plant, right? Even a water treatment plant. You know, it's a visible issue, you know, it's slime silos, whatever, so, you know, I, I wouldn't, it's pretty terrible to work into, this dusty...
With our testing plant, we will typically, Randy Heard will give us a call when they're cleaning up the sludge tanks, because that's when we're more apt, I think Tim was kind of saying, bio solids, when removing bio solids from the tanks is kind of exposing it to air is usually when people associate, you know, the unpleasant odors and things that come with a wastewater treatment plant now. Having said that, now, now I'll say this, I'll curse, I'll curse the whole thing, but I'd say nine times out of ten, we don't get a call from anyone. Once in a great while, we get someone from Potterstone that will call, but, and I think that's, our plant is currently located in a more dense area than this is located.
Right, we have a little bit of separation, we've got the decree there and stuff, but, our goal is to be a really good leader.
But will, will those momentary periods of smell still occur when sludge is being removed?
Shouldn't, because again, that's encapsulated and it's being pumped and closed piping and all that, so if it is, it's because the truck that's taking it is letting something escape from the load, the load vehicle.
We're using technology that's a bit older than I think what they're contemplating with this facility as well, but I talked more about that than I could.
And, you know, yeah, I mean, again, we have three, I don't know if we got everything combined, two, we have three separate odor control systems on this site. The things, it's better if they're in proximity to certain things. So, again, you know, the only thing that's, that's really open at that point is the membrane tanks, which everything's been fully treated at that point, and will be hydroponic reactors that have plants on top of it. And everything else is, is covered and the headspace is evacuated and scrubbed. So, again, less gross malfunctions or something, and, you know, I can't say that never can happen, right? But it ought to be an extremely rare occurrence.
And there are also systems for evacuating that atmosphere that comes out of the tank, of the tanker truck?
I honestly don't know, it's a good question. I don't know if the trucks are really going to be equipped with acting like that or if we can mandate that they are. Obviously, if you're bringing fluid into this box, you're either compressing air or you have to evacuate the air to make room for the water, so it does have to do that, whether, whether there's, you know, any charcoal filters on the vents or something like that that could be put in, that these guys would be willing to do, that we could, do this thing to do.
Well, I would, I would guess that that would be something your facility would have, that probably, I'm guessing, a manhole on the tank, on the truck, and something could be applied to that. I'm sure this has been figured out, getting into your business.
Well, it's probably, again, this is not an everyday occurrence, you know, those things will be coming in, I don't know, a few weeks, maybe, you have at least, at least thirty days of holding them. So, we'll be fairly, fairly aware, you know, if you're sort of smart about it, sort of schedule that at the times when it makes sense, based on the climate, and not do it on a temperature inversion day.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you from that.
Sorry.
You were going to talk more about...
Yeah, I'm going to sort of orient you a little bit of my site plan. All right, so, this is sixty-four, this area, U-Banks.
I was going to make sure people there could see it.
Am I in your way? Okay, so, this is sort of main entrance, public entrance would be in this area. So, a little bit parking up in here, this is the admin lab, office spaces, gathering spaces, you know, welcoming area is all up in here. Back in here is the, sort of the guts of the treatment system, the greenhouse part being here, the hydroponics. You know, we have, again, a couple of these reactors, those anaerobic reactors, anoxic reactors, that are doing things that they need to be covered, they're not air aerated. Membrane tanks over here, we do have to have access to that equipment to occasionally pull membranes where they need to be, they're generally cleaned in place, but occasionally you may lift the cassettes out of there for the cassettes. This is sort of mechanical, electrical, chemical feed rooms and all that kind of thing down in here, but over the top of it, we have green roof for most of it. There will be gathering and walkway and observation deck areas and all that kind of thing out in here. The workings, it's all a working plant, but the, you know, non-aesthetic parts of it here are access to a controlled access roadway here for the operating entity, they'd be coming in this way with workers, truck vehicles, those things will all come in this one, this is gated and controlled. So, again, we have some tanks for finished water storage, for refined water storage, we have a tank for bio solid residual storage, we talked about. The influent headworks, the major interceptor comes down through here, and this is where it comes into the plant, so this is where we have the influent pump station, screening devices, all those kinds of things are over here. We have, this is chemical storage, you know, chemical tanks that we have to have storage enough to last us between deliveries, so that's in the structure here, we have a maintenance building over here. The rest of these are little belt bolts or things like that, little pop-up that you have access to at the top. Nursery area here to grow plants for use in the development, principally this will be irrigated and used. This is our combination of stormwater pods and, you know, both for stormwater quality control and for some demonstration purposes. I've got it, I've got it, there's not so much else to decide on, sort of how this is, is laid out, but, you know, it's, you know, set up with both a visual buffer, but also this, you know, access points in for views, and certainly once you're on the site, being able to see these things predominantly, if you want to show people this stuff, there's opportunities to see, they're seeing from here or toward the facility. This is, you know, access in here, but we do have a, have a fence for these kinds of parts of the plant, and we can't or won't take people back there, but not, you know, check around.
So, Tim, the, the Emery Plant is under glass?
Good bit of it is, not all of it.
Okay. And why, why is that?
Well, essentially, like I said, we have a greenhouse, for lack of a better word, I mean, there, there, you know, sort of working plants in there. Now, there, we chose to have some outside and some inside. It's a different complete palette of plants. In the greenhouse at Emery, it's a tropical palette of plants, you know, these huge big elephant ears and massive flowers and all that kind of stuff, because we're controlling that environment to be that, to be what we want. The other part of the plant across the road are, because of site constraints, we're bifurcated and have two pods of treatment systems. On the other side of the road, they're just open vents, they're, they look like planting vents, for lack of a better word, they're not covered, and that's a different set of plants, that's more indigenous species that are hardly year-round. So, you know, part of it is to be able to put whatever plants we want in there, part of it is sort of a look and a feel. Could we do all this without that greenhouse here? Yeah, I mean, it'd be different plants, they wouldn't be nearly as attractive, a lot of them would dormant in the winter and all of that, so, you know, part of it is storage as well. So, there's, there's, what's that, business ability, I mean, the reality is, we're not harvesting things, we're maintaining the plants, but it's not like growing hay or pine trees, you're not going in and cutting, and you're not counting on the product above the ground to do much of anything, it's the roots that are doing all the work, providing habitat for additional bugs and microbes on the roots. That's why they're there, it's a little bit of oxygen fusion, but most of the value is providing habitat, extra habitat, so it compacts the footprint. It'd be a lot bigger if it were all liquid, and it would be less resilient, because we have different kinds of organisms because of that. But, we'll probably talk briefly about this, but we have much higher life forms in those reactors than you would get in a typical activated sludge plant. We have ten times more species than show up in a real treatment plant, some of which are very large, and you see them, you know, just microscopic bacteria. So they're more resistant to shock loadings, you don't lose everything in a shock, so you don't lose functionality like you can when you wash out or toxic spill into a lot of treatment plants, it's got a lot more safety factor, we're, we're, that's one of the big reasons to do that as well. Not that you hope it ever happens, but it can. Back in the days before people were aware of household wares or hazardous waste, that's a lot of that in a really small plant, it doesn't take dumping much down the drain to repair a plant that it goes to.
So this plant won't have a greenhouse?
This will.
It will?
It will, there's a part of it, let me, let me go to the next, go to the next couple of slides where I've done some elevations. So this is what this looks like now. So this, this would be the south elevation, so it's the south side of the building, so this would be the view, other than the fact we have put in all the loaded buffers and plants and stuff, this is essentially the view from sixty-four, from this to sixty-four. You're standing in that road and there were nothing in your way, that's sort of what this looks like. So, again, you've got sort of entry here, you know, U-Banks is over here, Creek is over here. So this is sort of the entry area, the admin area, the gathering spaces and all that, this is the greenhouse where the hydroponics and such are. Here's some of the cover tanks that we have to cover and we have to have access to some things that are inside it, and the green roof and the observation deck and all that is up there. And we just have successive elevations from different sides of the building. Do the next successive slides.
But, Tim, from the road though, you're going to have a buffer between...
There will be some buffer, there will be some planting, so I think, you know, there'll probably be some discussion in the site plan review process in terms of what that means and how opaque is that, and what can you see from where, what do you want to see from where, what don't you want to see from where? I'm sure that will all be done during the site plan approval process here. So, again, the second one is if you're on the U-Bank side, this is if you're approaching, if you parked your car, you came to visit and you were approaching the building, this is what you'd approach, that second slide. Again, that's sort of the open area, the lobby area. There's a big lobby area where probably we'd do the, you know, the tour assembly and all that would start there, gathering space inside that area. And the next one is from the opposite side, from the west side, west elevation, so again, you can see that, that observation deck at the floor level of the greenhouse, and then underneath that, sort of like a walkout basement, if you will, with a lot of mechanical parts, the electrical rooms, the chemical feed pumps. Excuse me. So, and again, sort of, you know, an effort to, thank you, integrate that and, you know, make it functional, but also not draw a lot of attention to it, take advantage of the topography, so you don't expand the footprint as much. And that's just sort of the plan after review of what I just said. My sort of entry area, the greenhouse, green roof over the mechanical rooms.
Tim, more on that view. So, on the right side is the admin entry, and you come into the greenhouse. And then, are folks visiting the greenhouse and are they walking out on top of the...
Yes, yeah, we'll be able to exit from this building through and in the greenhouse and continue throughout over these covered areas and out into the green roof. We're going to rework this some in terms of how it matches the walkway, we'll have different ways to, you know, again, gathering space where the tour can stop... We'll have different ways to, again, gathering space where the tour can stop and look over the rest of the site, you can see, and be able to talk and explain. We'll have placards and storyboarding telling going on all through here, in terms of what's where, what's doing what, sort of be able to tell the story of, you know, a little sort of major trail kind of effect.
And then when you're on a green roof, it'll be overlooking where you're growing the nursery.
Right.
Right.
You want to flip back to that site plan? Right, so you're up here.
Yeah.
So from there, you can see all of the rest of the medical plant, frankly, you see it all from that, at the elevation you're at. So, you know, while we may take people back there, it depends on who you're taking back there. Probably wouldn't take elementary school kids back there, might just talk to them from up there. Depending on who it is and what you're trying to do, they'd still be able to see it all from up there. Now, a close-up, isn't it?
You said that the kids would be up there, be only able to view, but you wouldn't necessarily take them to the other components of the plant?
Yeah, I'm probably ahead of myself and everybody else that has more to say about that kind of thing than me, so certainly it's not like it's exceedingly dangerous to have them out there, right? Just make sure that whoever's operating the plant is mindful of what to do when they're a tours, right? So if we are going to take them out there, you know, just be smart about that. And so it's not, I probably shouldn't say that you can't, but yeah, it's an operating plant, so.
But the green roof, it's not an area where there's any real function?
No, no, anything in that building, right, is well perfectly fine to wander all around there. Now, we do have some areas which are at least controlled access into the laboratory and the control room and all that, but they're both visible with glass observation windows, and if it makes sense, we can take them in there too. I mean, people won't just sort of wander in there because they wandered into the lobby and nobody was there in the moment, so they just wander down into the other area because they can't do that. But, I mean, it's a rare occurrence.
So, between the greenhouses and the green roof and this educational native plant nursery, do we have estimates of the throughput for those sections?
What do you mean?
How much will be treated in those areas?
Oh, you mean, I mean, how much will be used for irrigation purposes?
Okay.
Is that what you meant?
Mm-hmm.
Not a heck of a lot, frankly, it depends on what you're, you're growing and how much you really need, so it's, you know, it's like if you were irrigating your yard, your plants and stuff with whatever that spacing is, so, you know, this isn't a huge farm.
Right.
But...
So, this is the purpose of all these biological living systems, the hydroponics, is not to further refine the product?
The, no, the hydroponics, yes. But, I mean, the nursery, we're growing stock, and it's irrigating to use of that, so that's not really part of the process, that's an end user, if you will. The green roof is an end user, and it helps with other things, we're dealing with heat islands and that kind of thing, there's a reason for those as well, in taking up some of the product. The hydroponics are part of the working process, they're, they're there for a functional purpose within the treatment process.
Okay. And how much, how much of the throughput of this quarter million gallons will go through the hydroponics system?
Hundred percent. Because one of the treatment trains is in series. Yes, so those are aerobic units. Underneath those, we have even air diffusers to add, but that is, that's an integral, integrated, sequential process of the treatment.
So the greenhouse is growing plants to use in that filtration process?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to migrate from pretty pictures to not so much, but maybe more informational, the next slide is a process flow schematic. And, you know, cartoonish, yes, but gets the, sort of a point across. So, you know, these are the individual unit processes that will be at this plant and like what they're doing. So it's starting from the upper left corner, this would be the entry point to the plant, where it comes in and there's influence screening, fine screening, two millimeter screens to remove fine material, solid material. From that, it's pumped up to the main treatment plant area, goes through an anaerobic zone in front, or an aerobic selector it's called, we're cultivating phosphorus accumulating organisms, that's, that's where biological phosphorus removal work is done. The pre-anoxic zone or the first stage anoxic zone, now anaerobic means there's no oxygen, no absence, no dissolved oxygen, you know, nothing. The anoxic zone is an absence of dissolved oxygen, but there's oxygen embedded in nitrate and nitrite compounds that are in that tank, so that's where the denitrification process is, where then nitrogen is separated from the oxygen to remove the nitrates and nitrites. Yeah, I mean, there's, it's more complicated, but that's good enough. For this, the next zone, anaerobic zone, and that's where the hydroponics, that's what's planted and what's in the greenhouse, and, and that's where you're doing most of the conversion, the removal of organic waste, removal of VOD, for the quote, the removal of ammonia and converting ammonia to nitrates and nitrates is done in that zone. And then you've got a post-anoxic zone, the second stage anoxic, where there's further denitrification that goes in. There's various recycled streams that don't really show up as much here, some do, there's others that aren't showing up here, but that's okay, in terms of where we're moving stuff around to condition the environment the way we want it. We have an intermediate screen, another screening process, this is, you don't usually see this, but when we're ahead of membranes, the next stage is membrane filtration, it's really important to get rid of any additional, you know, accumulated or reconstituted solids, because they deserve to follow up the membranes more quickly.
They might actually come from the hydroponics.
There could be detritus from the roots, that's one of the things. The other thing we see in some places is, is a, you know, fibrous material might make it through into the plant, sometimes it gets reconstituted and agglomerated inside the process units ahead, so they become larger as they move through, so we want to remove those if there are. There won't be a lot, we're not expecting a lot, but it's a safety factor, not as much as anything. We move from there to, to microfiltration membranes. And again, these are newer, I don't know how familiar you are with membranes, but there's different styles of membranes. This is a new hybrid membrane, it's sort of a combination of a flat sheet membrane and a hollow fiber membrane. It's sort of the best of both. It has much better shedding characteristics, flood shedding, getting it, every once in a while you pulse it with air to shake off the junk that's accumulated, right? These do a much better job of doing that. Their footprint is much lower than the older conventional flat plate membranes, there's just a plant up in Ohio that does refit with these, and the footprint of the new membranes is like a tenth of the old membranes that were there. Membranes themselves are very small, so it's a very small, very compact process. Anyway, okay, so we go through there, and again, go to disinfection. We're showing ozone, we've probably got that or phantom that, that's a potential matter, but it will have the ultraviolet irradiation disinfection. From there, it splits, what goes to discharge, from there goes to discharge, because we don't want chlorine in the discharge, there'd be a limit, you'd have to dechlorinate that plant. But what's going to reuse, then there's a chlorine addition to maintain a residual, chlorine residual in the reuse system to prevent regrowth and keep that water pool fresh, so to speak. And that's all pumped out to wherever it's going, either the reuse uses or the discharge at the outfall. At the left, lower left is just, you know, whatever, we're pulling excess solids out, you know, wherever it does get circulated, and if they're out of their way, it's to a tank, aerated tank, and again, you eventually take that off as a liquid for Class B land application for right now. You know, right now, this plant is in a size that it's, it's, you know, really terribly viable or feasible to think about this part of a resource recovery, it's a reason I call this a resource recovery plant. At some point, there could be scale sufficient and technology, you know, technology scaling down and flows scaling up, where it may make sense to do some energy recovery with biosolids, with the waste solids, and take advantage of that. Right now, we're just not generating enough to, to make any sense with the cost of equipment and processes.
And that would be in the very first zone, the anaerobic zone?
No, I mean, we would be, this is sort of the lower left where, you know, whatever, whatever solids are being wasted, the sludge that's being wasted out of the system. I mean, again, we're growing bugs, they're accumulating these...
Biopolutens.
Biomass. Sooner or later, we got to get rid of some of them, right? So that's essentially what sludge is, it's just a bunch of bugs in suspension. We got to waste them periodically. So, but, there's embedded energy in that, and so there are ways to extract, there's energy there, there's nutrients, I mean, the, it's probably too far fetched, too far out, but the planet is phosphorus limited, someday phosphorus can be very, very valuable, and mining that out of the biosolids will be cost effective to do that. Energy's certain, and that's really a mass issue. I think there's some opportunities, you know, like I said, when we get to a bigger plant one way or another, it might make sense to do that. Yet, at some point with scale, I don't, it's possible, it makes sense to think about, about primary sedimentation at the old plants. Don't send all that to Sanford, and let's incorporate that in the energy recovery system. That would really accelerate when we have enough mass to make sense. Now, whether we can negotiate any kind of a cost credit from Sanford, because we're giving them much weaker waste, might be able to get a reduction. It's worth a try. Now, they're not spending the money, the way they treat, they spend a lot of money to treat the waste, so.
I was wondering about the opposite, I was wondering about removing more of the fluid, sending more of the solids down to Sanford.
If you have a reuse demand and we can generate, that's what we essentially would be doing, right? The more we can reuse on site, the more it makes sense to do and send less, right? At some point, especially, just like we want to preserve the potable water sources, that preserves that capacity, extends the life cycle of that pipeline and that agreement. So I think it's in everybody's best interest to reuse as much as we can. Now, early on, maybe it doesn't, because you're paying for that pipe, no matter how much you put through, in terms of the debt service I'm paying. So it probably makes sense to use it if it's going to cost a lot to make more reused water and if we don't have the demand for it. So those three things have to align, but they will. Somewhere during the lifespan of that pipeline, it will make sense to do more reuse and extend the life of it.
So given the schematic, you'll actually have two pipes coming out of the plant to the existing plant?
Well...
One for the fluid treated and then one for the reuse to keep going?
Artist license, just to be able to illustrate that we're not chlorinating the discharge portion, so, so the reality is, and we could, but I don't think that makes a lot of sense, it probably still makes more sense to send the reclaim, send the unchlorinated water to the plant. And if it's going to continue on to 3M as, as reuse, maybe supplement with chlorine there, because a lot of it is probably going to get discharged, not sent out to 3M, right? Most, well, tens, I mean, I don't know, I mean, 3M expensed their contract, we use a lot of reuse, and there may be a small amount discharging, and most of it is replant water. But I don't think it's ever going to make sense to force everybody into a dechlorination system to comply with a permit at all this, and I think it's still going to make sense to punch it up with chlorine at the plant for the part that goes to reuse and leave the discharge alone, so it's never gotten chlorine, so we don't ever have to worry about that.
But are you suggesting that you're going to punch it up with chlorine at the existing plant?
Yes. Yes. So again, there's, there's a number of little but important details to work out at the plant, we've said it before, to work this out with, with Fred and staff, and your engineers working on the plant, and work out some of these details about the connection to the actual outfall. And the connection to the reconvenance item to 3M, and is there a chlorine issue, and is there any other monitoring or sampling to go on there? A lot of those kinds of things, they aren't big items, but they're all important items to work out. Now that they're working on the design of the plant, this is the right time now to do that. It wasn't until it turned loose on that plant.
Now, we conceivably preserve the pumping function, or would require the pumping function?
Right.
So some of the equipment would be reused?
Yeah, I mean, technically, we could pump it all the way without it, but I think so it makes sense to reuse that infrastructure.
It doesn't make a lot of sense to have two pipes, two pumps?
I don't think so, not at this stage.
There's two pumps involved, but they don't, they don't need to be a drip point necessarily?
Right. Yeah, because we'll already be pumping and pressurizing the system and all that kind of stuff, but, yeah. It's designed for different purposes, getting it all the way to 3M, we've already got facilities that have been designed exactly for that, and if they're in good shape, then it's still working fine, it doesn't make sense to just abandon them just because.
Any idea on the route for that line from the U-Banks Road Plant to the legacy plant?
Yeah, we actually had some different alignments trotted out and had reviewed with staff last year, and I think, you know, at least at staff level, everybody was pretty comfortable with a picked alignment, so there is an alignment, I don't have it with me or...
Any recollection, I mean, was it along streets or what's it, is it?
Off streets. Mostly using rights of way, existing rights of way to get there. Yeah, that just seemed to me, there's not a certain order it has to go. Because again, keep in mind, these are reused lines, so if there is ever any need along the way, it's possible along the way.
And moreover, what, what I think I heard you saying was that that was basically two and a half miles of potential access for dechlorinated reused water, unchlorinated, not yet chlorinated reused water?
We have to change our strategy, if there, if a demand develops for it and we only have the one pipe, then that, I think that's where you're heading with this, is up, does it really want to be chlorinated or not chlorinated?
Well, there's, I mean, there's two farms that are half a mile off that path that are seeking water down Industrial Drive.
Well, I mean, if they're, again, then it, if, if there is that potential demand now or soon, then it warrants another look at, does it warrant all chlorination and dechlorination down there for the discharge, or does it, does it warrant a dual pipe? If one's chlorine and one isn't, you have to sort of quantify what kind of demand and what kind of sense does that make, and if there are a return on that, does it put dual pipes in?
Oh, no, these farms would not want chlorine water.
Right. Oh, okay. Yeah, and that, yeah, we're probably at the top of a little bit, the state technically, we're supposed to chlorinate the refined water system, so technically...
Before we isn't.
But for the purpose it's going to, and again, the fact that it's continuous flowing for discharge and going, yeah, I think we could get that through the state, but that's a good point. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, that demand could exist. Great demand, that would be great.
Should we wrap up, or are we intent to work toward the commission or the...
I mean, I'm fine, it's up to you guys, we're pretty close to the end.
We're close, thanks.
Yeah, we're only a couple more, and we've already talked about most of these things, so again, for the third party, again, I mean, this stuff is going to be worked out in the agreement in these next steps in terms of what the operation agreement looks like, but, you know, philosophically, you know, it's, it's other money, not town money, and that that party is responsible, and assuming the risk of reliability of operating and all that. Now, there's going to have to be some thought given to now that you want to keep, the NPD does permit, and that's an umbrella under you, so there's going to have to be some thought given as to how that works, because you're the permit holder of the state, and any reason there's a violation or whatever, you're... And any reason there's a violation or whatever, you're the first call, it gets, you get the first call. Of course, it has to be subrogated and contracted down through to the operating entity, obviously, but you can't totally remove yourself from that then if you're the current one. So, that would, one of the reasons we talked about bifurcating the permit instead is that my own unilateral assumption is that you wouldn't want to be in the middle of that if you get bored. But if you want to be, that's fine too. And again, there'll be provisions in there, just like Ben was saying, how does the development charges flow through, where does the money go? Obviously, you're still dealing with all the rate setting, all of the customer service and interface and billing and all those kinds of things. And again, I think I mentioned it before, but we would expect, contract, you have some type of buyout or turnover provision, you know, if you ever want to assume ownership of the facility, there'll be provisions for that. We've had that in all of our private agreements, you know, so the option's there. They haven't been exercised yet, but they mark something at the end too. Obviously, the, you know, the cost of that is higher when there's still a lot of debt on the property and it's a lot lower when that comes along. So, again, this was just sort of a summation, sort of, you know, rehabbing benefits we've talked about in terms of not having to come out of pocket or they're creating this sustainability aspect or deep in, as I've said, that there's, it'll create some partnering opportunities with folks and some outreach opportunities that I think the public would be interested in. Again, one of the big things is continuing the replant water availability, both at 3M in the short run and everywhere else you can in the long run. Again, in the short run, this plant's gonna give you some allocatable capacity to allocate against while, while waiting for Sanford to materialize, that will be something here to allocate if there's some other developers in other places, even though technically, they're never getting to this plant, you know, if there's a paper vehicle, it's gonna keep that moving. And then, again, various kinds of community invasion processes and city renovation processes and lots, lots of, lots of different people have come through some of these plants that you would have thought had an interest in these ones, but. And I kept a really short next step slide because we were just focused on keeping this process moving and that is getting on with that letter of intent for permitting purposes. And again, Paul Messick went to great lengths, they have language in there. I've got the draft here. You know, Brian has copies, Tim has copies. This one I started with a year ago, which was about a half a page, it is mushroomed to three pages, but that's still not too bad as agreements go. But again, getting on with that so that that can get executed and get the apps into the state and get them moving, but as I said, Paul went to great lengths, they have language that essentially doesn't commit anybody to anything. You know, you're really not committed to anything by doing this other than to help the process keep moving with the state permit. The second next step is where that happens with a real agreement between the town and the operating entity, how this is really gonna work. That still has to get done, but there's some time to do that. The other one is really sort of urgent. And so, I'm happy to keep talking about that if you'd like to, or I think Brian's thought was to schedule this at an upcoming session.
So, we, we spent, we spent over a year, probably a year and a half, talking about, talking about wastewater treatment options and then getting into the machinations of the forest name to Sanford. And we touched, we would touch on this facility a little bit, it wasn't even then a fully-formed idea, I think, until probably the last year or so. We got into it a little bit. I heard from the board in previous meetings that there wasn't a complete understanding of the technical aspects and how it would operate, the VCD, reused water, you know, what, where it would be located, how, you know, what some of the issues are with that location. It sounds like Mr. Bonnet has some additional questions. I don't know if he's not, if he's not sharing them tonight, then we probably need to turn those around at some point here in the near future so that we can continue to answer, get answers from Old North State and from, from McKinnon Creed on how this plant would technically operate. Once you're, I, I think if you're, if you're achieving a comfort, comfort level with that, then I would like to schedule some time with Mr. Messick and the board to go into what we're now calling letter of intent. I think at one point in time, and Tim, you brought out that little one pager, half pager, three quarters pager or whatever, I think back-
That was a year ago.
Back then, it was called memorandum of understanding.
Correct.
And I think I might have referred to it as MOU with you guys in the past, and so it's grown to recently become this letter of intent, why the attorneys changed the Milton Plage on that.
We got a page of whereas's and wherefores and all that, so you gotta have those.
So, that goes in, and some of that is getting into some of the details that you guys have talked about in previous meetings as far as what, you know, what are, what are some of the cost sharing, how do we address the 3M issue, exactly what kind of capacity we're talking about. Some of those things, most of those things are actually begun to be addressed in the LOI. So, you have, you have that letter of intent, as Tim said earlier, as a first step of telling the state that we are moving in some sort of direction. And that gets, that gets the ball going down the field as far as the, the NPD S permit. There's a second agreement, as, as you see here, and I think even on the agenda, I mentioned there's a second agreement here that's bulleted, that talks about the actual operation, that goes into more detail about roles and responsibilities. We haven't really gotten much into that agreement at all at this point. We've just kind of been working on this letter of intent to this point, to my knowledge, unless the attorneys have talked about something.
They have talked about that, but again, first things first, I mean, this is, this is the one that's more present at hand and urgent and, you know, less of its nature is less detailed and, and non-committal. So, that's why a lot of the energy, I think, went toward getting this ready. Obviously, like you said, most of the energy has gone to the Sanford agreements.
Yeah, yeah, all our time and, you know, from, from my perspective, anyway, the attorneys, for the most part, you know, the attorneys have developed some of this language for the letter of intent, and I don't know that they can do much with it. I don't know what else they can do to it until they've had a chance to talk to you about it, but I didn't think we had really a comfort level with you guys on this until we had this conversation here tonight. And, you know, it sounds like there may be other questions too apart from tonight. So, so it's really up to the, you know, it's really to the will of the board as far as how quick, how quickly you want to proceed with this. It would be my recommendation to at least start going into, before we put the cart too far ahead of the horse, that we go into some discussion of the letter of intent at a subsequent meeting. I'd really like to get that off the ground. But if you guys have more you want to talk about and share with regard to the, you know, technical, technical aspects of it, because I can either go on concurrently or we can wait, but I, I would recommend that we get into the letter of intent discussion possibly as soon as the next meeting.
And I'd be happy to answer as many of those other questions I can by then and continue that process if it needs to, because again, that, that all needs to get worked out before you're really committing to anything, which is reasonable. But it's not prerequisite necessarily to this, but I'd choose to say.
Well, the schedule outline does require pretty quick action. I think if we're gonna consider taking pretty quick action, we'll then consider.
Where's the schedule? Oh, schedule that's implicit in the graph.
The graph from page seven.
Right. Okay. Brian, you mentioned a second document that gets into roles and responsibilities.
Yeah, that would be the formal agreement between the town and, and Old North State for, you know, who's doing what, how's the operating issue working, you know, who's, who's responsible for what, who's authority for what, how is the charge system working? All those kinds of details would be in that agreement. There's a, I think there's a very early preliminary draft that has really only bounced around probably between the attorneys at this point. The next steps, that would be the second one, right? Which was, you know, that's, that's more akin to the Sanford agreement in terms of its, its detail and its content.
You know, as far as the state is concerned, they don't need to see, at least yet, they don't need to see that agreement.
Right.
What they want to see is this letter of intent that says that there's, that if you so choose, that there's a willingness to share that discharge permit. And so, that they can get the ball rolling on that. That doesn't, that doesn't in and of itself mean that the town is committed 110% lockstep with doing that, but it starts that discussion with the state.
No, I'll read you an excerpt from the last paragraph that was between Paul and Eagle. It is not the party's intent that this LOI be deemed to constitute a legally binding obligation on the part of the town, CBI or Old North State. This is the work in process. This is the path we're heading, but, you know, we're not chained to the path.
And that satisfies the regulatory?
That's what they told me they just needed, were some type of like a memorandum of understanding. I, I have to confess, I'm a little worried, some of that wording may be so strong as to scare them that this doesn't mean anything, but I'll jump off that bridge when I get to it.
And which agreement needs, or which of these items needs to be in place to get an optimization control?
The A to C, we don't need any of them. Because, because I have the state that works with a lot agreeing to give me a zero flow of A to C.
Okay.
The flow will come when the NPD S comes, but he won't hold up the plan review to do bricks and mortar waiting for the NPD S permit and let that proceed in parallel apart. So, all I need for him is the plans approved.
For a zero flow?
For a zero flow A to C and start.
I'm gonna need a letter of intent.
No, whatever intent's for the NPD S issue.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, the state is basically, is that now there's a new administration and his secretary and all that, but, you know, at one point, we had this predecessor saying, oh, we don't care, you can go do whatever you want at risk, go have fun, start up the bulldozers, you know, pour all the concrete you want, you know, you're at risk, you gotta get a permit to use it, but I don't care. We can build it. A little bit off that at this point, but again, so we can get that moving and so we're proceeding, that's why you've got site plan approval coming in and all that kind of stuff moving in that.
From the respect you need to know if we want to go forward with the letter of, you giving us?
Well, yeah, I'm not asking you, obviously, to approve something you don't have in front of you right now. Tonight's not really the intent, I mean-
But you wanted to get that.
Tell me a jingle within the next meeting.
If you guys want to, if you guys want to do more of this, we can do more of this if you guys, before we get to that letter of intent discussion phase, if you want to move on, move on, continue to ask questions about this, but then move on to reviewing this letter of intent language, then that would be kind of what I'm recommending if you want to go ahead and engage in that conversation, and I'd always support that. If you want to, if you want to, you know, have Mr. Baldwin and others at another meeting and ask more questions, then that's certainly something to consider as well.
I'd like for the state, first time, simultaneously having the questions and-
Sure.
And I think clearly with Paul not here, we certainly want to hear from him.
He's here.
I didn't see him come in.
So be that.
You should have been in more in disguise, I might have threatened, just like you up here.
He was smiling a lot during some of the discussion.
Well, we can do, I'll have to call on my favorite attorney, John, to get the discussion and then our next meeting.
Well, it's still fresh.
Yeah.
Yeah. This was a good, I think this was a good presentation.
It was really good, well, thank you.
marginally because his steak catch is strong. I don't know, you should see some of mine, maybe you'd wish I passed out. Ah, yeah. It was up pretty low.
You started with, you know, bringing up the conference stuff.
Oh, not at all.
Not at all.
Not at all. But that's okay.
John, you said you had some questions you want to do now?
First, any of the follow-ups?
Sounded like it was a long list, if you want to mail it to me.
Yeah, dozen, dozen questions.
Yeah, they're just, they're even tall.
Couple, a couple have been addressed tonight, but.
Now, there's greats and more.
I have just one concern. I know we're in the process of sharing our permit. What is the town getting out of this other than a treatment plant? That's simple as I'd like to know. What are we getting out of this other than a treatment plant? The third party's gonna make money off it.
You should make an argument on how much money is really being made and that, that call has seen some performance I put together that would indicate you would run from that quote investment unquote, but that's a subsidy that Chatham Park is taking care of. But I won't get into detail of showing you the charts and stuff, but I guess the question would be, why did you get a discharge permit increase in the first place six years ago? It was to facilitate town development and growth. This is what this services. And that growth and development then doesn't happen until Sanford's in place. Is that simple?
So, I understand that, but I mean-
You undersold the mortgage more than for a couple of years.
Funny because Chatham Park will be concerned. So, it's not like it's separate, one thing or the other, that's the part that I kind of think about, like, well, Chatham Park will be concerned.
Town residents, I mean, I'm okay with just a little bit. And again, that was part of the rationalization for that discharge permit. But frankly, without Chatham Park, there would be no 3.2 MGD discharge permit, there would be no justification for it. So, that's what it's for.
There's parts throughout that, like you say, where do we get the size of a wastewater treatment plant? Well, wastewater treatment plant's a pretty big thing.
Well, we don't get economic development without wastewater capacity. And we went into a moratorium many, many years ago and everything's slowed way down.
Getting traction, I've been around a couple of those and it's an ugly thing to try to get traction again after the moratorium. It doesn't come back on by a flipping switch, it takes years to restart itself.
I think it's a good sense.
It's painful. It's real.
I think to me, the one piece that would be helpful is to know what, like, way further down the road after this, then what, I mean, what are we, what are we moving towards, you know, this? When this, when this becomes not enough capacity, then, then what's next? Are we looking at lots of small regional kind of place or are we thinking of a, and I know that's where in the future, but the future also, the steps you take to get there become part of the cost of effort required.
Yeah, and it's key, and I think we've talked about this before too, is to, is to realize that, that, you know, the future is largely, is to some extent unknown, so, so planning for that and trying to keep options available and open, but at the same time, trying not to cast anything in concrete until you need to so that you can take the best advantage of opportunities that present themselves that, that aren't foreseen at the time. And that's happened time and time again, and that's why Sanford is where Sanford is. Stranded a lot of capital in the plant that, you know, weren't enough for you, they wouldn't be making up extra production shortages. And the technology has enhanced that, that plant doesn't make replant water quality. So, there's a lot of things you do differently if you could stage this out and take advantage of what changes. Climate change, climate changes, technology changes, all of that does. And so, you're right, having thoughts of, you know, well, a regional system, like what would decentralized systems look like, what would regional collaboratives potentially look like? And frankly, you start sort of sussing out all of those paths as best you can, knowing that you don't have to do anything right away, but you want to prep for it, be ready for it, cultivate those options that you can. So, you're exactly right, and I think I heard that's in some sense in process right now in terms of a master plan of sorts.
Yeah, I don't think we can start too soon. And it, it is sort of edgy to take these steps without knowing what the ultimate solutions would be.
What's the second major step we're taking when a number of us on board have wanted a level of master planning that would tell us what phase two is?
And we've invested so much, or are about to invest so much in Sanford's line that it would be virtually impossible for us to be able to build our own plant.
Well, I don't know. I don't think it's necessarily true, because again, it is for additional flow and growth. If the flow's not there, they don't need to build anything else. If the flow's there, then there's a revenue stream there to offset that. Now, granted, there's timing issues of front ending and recovery and all that, so there's a recovery, cost recovery strategy that maybe evolves and changes and morphs when that happens, but no, it should pay its own way, or you shouldn't do it.
The nice thing is that if we're not taking that, putting out the financial, not taking a big loan to do this, it allows us to do anything from Town Hall.
Well, a loan for a sewer plant and a loan for Town Hall would be two different funding.
I understand that it's two different fundings, but it's still, it's a lot to take on to have two.
You'd be funding this with user charges, and you'd be funding Town Hall with head of alarm, tax, property tax.
Right, I understand that.
And I think, I think planning, planning again, has been said else for a couple of times, is currently underway. We're planning to plan right now, and I think the solutions the staff and consultants have brought forward at this point do give us a few years to get onto that phase two and phase three sort of utility master plan. I mean, those comments have been, from the board, have been heard loud and clear, and that's, that's what we're working on. I think these options give us some time to be able to do that so that when the time comes, we are able to kind of get over that four MGD hump that we're going to see at some point in time. We have a few years to get there, and we have a few years to plan for.
So, you know, I keep finding myself hungry for what I think and hope will be in this comprehensive water and sewer resource master plan. And I'm hungry, as you referred to, what's the, what is, what comes after this plant? What I want to know, I feel the need to know that while making each of these very major significant steps, not having that, I appreciate your indulgence in some of these detailed questions. It's going to clearly lay the groundwork, and there's some questions we just don't have the capacity to answer at this point in time, but for example, we discussed the demand curve for reuse water. I think that would be informative and comforting because there will be a point where we're looking for a place to put the reuse water, I imagine. And I'll tell you, I'm comforted and reassured that you tell me that 100% of that plant's at least quarter of a million gallons throughput will go through the hydroponic system because that was concerned for me that this plant might be, with all of its environmental and premature, be interpreted as greenwashing.
Right.
And given its prominent vocation, I think that's suitable, that's appropriate, that's reassuring. I am still curious about and hungry about questions regarding alternative locations. I've heard so many times now, it's about the topography, it's about the hydrology, but I've heard that every single time verbally, and I would like to see some documentation because again, if we were contemplating taking on the debt to build this plant ourselves, I really hope and expect that we would do a complete overview of the entire town to find the optimal location. And I just haven't seen the documentation that this is the optimal location for this next step for the town of Pittsburgh. If it's not, that's fine, let's just understand the parameters of suboptimality, you know? I mean, clearly, there's the, I've heard it called the tributary tonight, the sewer shed, if you will, who flows downhill to this plant, but pumping the reuse water back to end uses for the reuse, you'll see a lot of my questions are in these lines.
Yeah, if you carry that thought to its extreme, then you fully decentralize everything and put all of the waste, all of the reclaimed water generation at point of use and co-locate so that you have very short conveyance facilities in both directions, right? So there's someplace where the curves cross, and what makes sense and what doesn't, you're not going to have 100 decentralized treatment plants, but the days of having one big one at the other end of town and think you're going to get reuse water back like Raleigh struggles with, those days are probably over, too. Probably a blend.
Well, in planning optimization or the optimal location, you've got a declining criteria.
Yes.
Right. Because there's a point much closer to the door than the lake that's within Chad and Park's property that lets a lot more gravity flow, but then you've got the issue of it being close to the lake.
That's right. And then you.
Angst at the discharge.
Probably going to get all the way over to North Village.
So.
Part of it is a timing and phasing, frankly, when you're doing the development project, is where is the wastewater generated?
That discussion would be helpful to see in writing.
I mean, when the NPDS permit was issued many years ago, a big question was, we locked ourselves into the existing plant location instead of looking further downstream, further down the tributary, where a lot more gravity would flex. And I think, I did a study, and I went, you could collect another 1,300 acres if you went closer to the lake than our plant does today. That's a lot of land. So optimal is, you've got a better understanding of criteria.
Now, on the flip side, overcomplicated and extended, but, you know, you've got a lot of sort of corrugated topography that makes a lot of gravity difficult. There's some resistance to, you know, the gravity interceptors along sensitive waterways where that's where you have to put it then. And roads are up on ridges, and now you've got flow going in both directions, and you've got more of those places, you've got, you know, being pump stations, so sometimes there's an argument for pressure systems instead of gravity, which then makes the location of the plant totally irrelevant, but you can be almost anywhere, you wheel the water wherever, you know, we work for hampered rovers, they have nine treatment plants, and they can wheel their flow to any of their plants through just pressure pumping. You know, the area they cover where that works. It's a complex sort of decision-making process sometimes.
I'm sure, I'm sure, and it's not my expertise, and this is where I would like to see that documented, that deliberation documented. And to the extent that Michael, you might be willing to contribute that to Mr. Baldwin, the contemplation of other locations, I think, might help address concerns in the community about what other locations have been considered. Or put a notch on the table, benchmark, or, that sounds, put a place marker, placeholder, perhaps, for future consideration. You know, Jay, to your point, one thing that I'd like to sound to get out of this is greater redundancy and backup and potential for assurance of continued treatment in case of uncertain circumstances. So, you know, I'm curious, we're talking about interconnection from 15501, but how about East Street, which is so much closer? And the East Street side of town has sewer there, so I'd like to see some numbers on connecting that. Yeah, again, I'll put this in writing.
Okay.
Fair enough.
What, now we, wastewater, the LOI, June, no? Then I'll, well, yeah.
That sounds good.
Prepare for it.
Right.
Thank you. Tell EMT guys they can just continue with dinner, go to bed, or whatever.